And we'll call this workshop to order. And in presence, we have Ed.
Carol.
Carol, thank you. Carol and.
Bob is online.
Bob's online.
So if you could.
Okay, so we need a motion for allowing Bob to fully participate in this meeting remotely due to exceptional circumstances. So moved.
Second.
All right.
Doug is dialing in now.
Bob gave a thumbs up. Okay, it's perfect. Doug is in too? No, not yet.
He's having trouble getting in.
Okay, fine, we'll wait for him. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with the items for discussion. Leslie.
Hi Leslie.
Hello. Leslie McTormp, utility billing manager.
Ah, this must be Leslie Day. Hour.
Hour.
Welcome to Leslie's.
Y'all listen to me.
Leslie workshop.
She only wants the hour, so don't give her more than.
Yeah, no, no.
So these utility rule areas I wanted to bring up for board discussion, one, because it has with to do with disconnection of water from a resident that previously we didn't, or charges that have been contested, not to the board, but to me on a regular basis. The first one is the consumer deposit.
Oh, Tony.
So regularly currently charging.
Hold on, before, before we dive into this. No, not yet. So Leslie has been working tirelessly tirelessly on updating some of these utility rules, which is essentially our rulebook for operating and managing the utility billing side.
A lot of the updates. A lot of the updates have come from situations that have come up since the last time they were updated and things that either we aren't clear on, or it's re-avise that the policy needs to be updated.
So the intent of this workshop is to get some direction or ideas to where the board opines on different topics, and these three in particular are probably the most contentious items. So the intent would be to get some direction.
Feedback.
Feedback, thank you, Tony, I know semantics, get some feedback from the board. We'll bring it back to you in a redlined version form prior to a publicly noticed public hearing at a future date to be determined. So with that, I'll turn it, Doug Banks is online now, so.
Okay, so I need a motion for allowing Mr. Banks to fully participate in this meeting remotely due to exceptional circumstances.
So.
So a motion for a second, all right, have a favor?
All right.
And by the way, as an add-on to what Chelsea mentioned in yesterday's paper, it was called a notice of rule development. The floor statutes require that when we amend or revise or write a new rule, we have to put a notice of rule development then, but when we get to the point where we're doing the rulemaking, once we have a sense of what the board wants to come back with a proposed version. Then, then we publish a notice of rulemaking and set the date and time certain.
Question. Are, is the amendment eight that's attached to the stuff that we're going to be going through, is that the last, in 2003 was the last time we amended that?
Yes.
Are the strike-throughs in there as showing now what we're proposing to change?
Strike-throughs are what was previously adopted.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get into it more in detail in a few minutes, but I thought that some time ago, we were having issues relative to interpretation of three or four of those fees, that some of which I even had question was, were they even being collected? And there for a while, I don't think they were. Are we going to have a discussion about, one, what they legally mean? I've been in this business 50 years and I have never read anything written like that in the way of fees.
Yeah, I think the accrued capacity and the admin fee.
Yeah, all of those, they make no sense.
What we have flagged to discuss with the rate.
Okay, I just want to make sure there has not been since 2003, when amendment eight was introduced, no changes to it.
This and this review has been a full overhaul. We sat in this room two weeks ago, going page by page, so the intent is to one and done it, hopefully.
Definitions definitely need to be rewritten.
Yes.
Yeah, and part, part of it, if you recall, there have been a number of amendments to rates, fees and charges in that table.
Oh, yeah.
And that was by a separate public hearing, a shorter public hearing process with resolutions that adopted revised schedules and they become incorporated into the rule.
But that just basically changed the price and or the numbers, but it didn't change the definition of the.
No, they reversed, no.
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking to do, but these three items, we definitely want to get some feedback on today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Leslie.
So I did bring up the consumer deposit last year, and the question was whether we could apply interest. We didn't meet with Steven Bloom and the interest that would apply would be marginal, but small, but the biggest challenge is that currently we would not be able to apply the interest to the existing customers. So it's moving forward if we were to apply interest, that would be a burden administratively because we wouldn't manually have to track, maintain interest rates on 8,500.
So right now, what we're collecting still, and have we always collected a hundred dollars deposit fee? Has it always been?
It varies per size, but yes, it's a hundred.
For a five eighths customer, it's always been a hundred?
Per meter.
Yeah, per meter. So anybody that's been here in Gateway, like me, for 30 years, I've had a hundred dollar setting in my name in an account for 30 years.
Yeah.
Yep.
That is absurd.
Well, you know.
Oily absurd.
I checked with the city of Fort Myers and they do the exact same thing.
City of Cape.
That is where I get my water from.
City of Fort Myers should, but they got reason to do it.
When we moved here, the city of Cape Coral holds it free.
Sorry?
The city of Cape Coral holds it for a year.
I could see two years. I could see two years, as long as in two years you have no.
No penalties, no. Right, that clause was there as well, yeah.
But right now, so if, what you're saying is that if we want to introduce a interest issue, it is not retroactive back.
Correct. And I would, or going forward, it would have to be a manual process for us to track all the.
So why can't we, I, or go the interest and let them have the money back after two years?
That's the, the purpose of this.
And that would cut this, well, we're, we're approaching a million dollars. That, that's just ridiculous. There's no sense to have that kind of cash in, on here, no way.
There is, you know, the issues of collection. Right now, we're at 100% collection because the.
What do you mean?
We, we collect all bills.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, that's because Vicky spends three days calling people before water shut off, saying, hey, you owe us.
Right, but we're not, we're also not chasing final bills of $50, $60.
Well, the other thing I would do to make that a little bit more incentive is take, change the 100 to maybe 200 or 250 and only hold it two years.
The deposit?
Yeah, yeah, they have no interest.
So the direction or the feedback, the feedback that you're looking for is.
Whether to leave it the same? Or.
Well, hold on, with regards to interest, we're talking first, first, with regards to interest, do you want us to tack on the interest or not? That's.
I do not.
It sounds to me like it's too complicated.
Yeah.
So, thank you for the feedback. The second, it is, do you want us to return said deposit after a time and date certain, whatever that time period be, if it's two years, three years, one year, what, what timeframe would you like that? You did some homework on what other utilities do.
Two years.
Two years is the standard. Some do it a less, but the administrative code is written for 23 months. I think I had done a little peeking around too when this first came up, and two years seems to be pretty common.
I'd seem, see going to the two years and the same time bump it from 100 to 250. It'd be done with.
Let's give that direction. So I guess two years, is everybody in line with the feedback for two years?
That's the change is the two years.
This is just a discussion, though.
Yeah, there's.
We can't.
Yeah, so yeah.
Bob asked, so yes, from.
I, I don't see you returning, just keep it, nobody's, somebody grunting about this?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's their money, it's their money.
Well, to, to Ed's point, we've had his deposit on file for 30 plus years at the same amount that we collected 30 years ago. So this has come up, Bob, reoccurringly around budget time. That's what we're just trying to, let's one and done this.
Okay, but what do we do with the money? We've been earning interest on this, right?
No.
What is it, it's got it sitting in a checking account?
We're not earning interest, and neither is the owner.
Correct, it's in a non-interest bearing account.
Yeah, and typically. That's a little silly. Well, no, well, it, it, I know it's going to sound crazy, the Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution basically says, if you take the interest on their money, you'd be, you're taking it without due process, and I've been through this fight before. So it would be their interest, not, the district can't take their interest. Have you thought about sliding scale also for meter size or just from the staff perspective or not?
Sorry?
A sliding scale of the deposit?
For the deposit side?
You got, it's pro-rated by the meter size, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's already that way.
Are you asking about the amount we collect?
No, no, right now.
Or the term of how long we.
So if the board, if the hearing goes to 250, then every other meter size will be.
Two years first, the feedback that you want, so we can, the next action, okay, I think we, the feedback is that we all agree on the two years.
Two years, one penalty, no return check, one return check.
I'd like to see two years, no penalty.
Nothing.
Nothing. And then the other one is, how do you handle the people that are dead, gone and moved? Did they get their money back at that time?
Yes.
So we don't have to then be giving it to an address of somebody that didn't earn it.
If we refund the property and it comes back as not cash, then it gets filed as abandoned property.
Right, as the accounts are closed, them are as refunded.
So if the property is sold, that person gets the 100, the next person puts down 100.
Correct.
So we don't, we're not chasing people.
Right.
Good, okay.
The, the.
I have a question.
What, what would happen if, let's say I've been there for three years, and in my first year, I don't know, there was a late fee, there was something, something happened. But that was in my first year. I've been there now three years, so I've been two years without any, any hiccup. Can I get my money back then?
Yeah, the.
Two years clean.
From my understanding.
So I think that.
Doug has his hand up.
Yeah, so just really, I think this is where the language has to be, has to be very precise. When we're saying two years, it's really, you have to have, let's say, 24 consecutive months of no late payments or, or whatever. Because I think, we, we have to figure out what that language is, because let's say you go, you know, two years, or, you know, 24 months. And then, you know, two months prior to that, you, you have a late payment or, or whatever, or maybe you're late first couple of months and then you're clean. So I just think, let's just be very clear on the two years, and that, that language has to be, from the point of, of creation, you will get your deposit back by fulfilling, you know, 24 consecutive months of in good standing or somewhere along those lines.
If, if that's the intent, we'll, we'll work on drafting some language to make it match what the intent is.
Okay.
And then is it two years after a hiccup? Of clean?
Two, two years, 24 months clean, period, consecutive.
So in your, in your example you provided, you, you had your one hiccup in year one, but years two and three, you were good, as long as that's 24 consecutive months, no hiccups, you would get it returned.
The clock would start again upon your defaulted hiccup.
Yeah, and this is where I would probably, and Leslie might know, but I would probably look at the language that's pre-existing with the county or with other entities. Because there's a lot of weird stuff that can happen, you know, you, there could be some exceptions, so let's just make sure that, that we have something that is pretty universal and, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
And if, and if after reimbursement, you have a hiccup, you go back on the line?
Okay.
You repay. So if you, if you, if you got two clean years, and then you have a bad next month, you redeposit whatever the amount is, and you've got to get two more years clean. Otherwise.
Well, I, I think.
Why don't we just skip with late?
That's where like.
Can we do that? Because I thought there was some statutory requirement on amounts of late fees.
The whole purpose of the, of the two years is to establish.
Doug, just hold on one second.
So. Well, but then he's going to create a nightmare, because can you imagine if somebody's late like four times during the year?
Well, they're still going to be under the deal that they have a connection fee and the clock doesn't tick.
I mean, I would, I, I, I think I would be more comfortable with, if they're late, then make the late fee higher.
If you can make the penalty such that it's a deterrent.
We can actually use versus money that we're just holding on to. So late fee that we can use, it's better.
If we could make it a deterrent, I'm all for it.
Does that make sense, Tony?
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure that this is, end up being something that's, arms have become, you know.
Not looking for a thousand dollars.
Leslie, what is our late fee right now?
1.5%.
1.5%.
1.5% of the outstanding balance?
Correct.
Yes.
So it's pocket change.
I know, so that's what I'm saying, we increase $50 or one point, or whatever percentage, whichever one is higher.
We had 5%, I think in our draft, we had like 5%.
I mean, that, that's not.
With the mental.
Yeah.
Okay, so, two years.
You got the idea.
24 months consecutive, no hiccups returned.
Yes.
And we're not going to go back to them if they have a hiccup, we'll, we're gone.
Late fees.
Yes, penalties, late fees.
So Doug had a comment.
Yeah, so I, I think Chelsea just answered it. So the, the whole purpose of the, the, getting the deposit is to establish a payment history. Once you have established that payment history over consecutive 24 months, that money is given back to you. But at any point after that, if you are delinquent, you are, we're, we're defaulting to the late charges as being the penalty. We're not going to ask, we're not going to ask people to, to give us a hundred dollars again. Unless. Unless they are, maybe the only alternative is, they're going to pay the late fees, but if you're, then if you're starting to show a consecutive habit of X amount of time, we could ask for that deposit again. Yeah. Like if four late payments in a row or four consecutive months would require a resumetal of the deposit, and you would have to do a 24 months of clean history. Plus, plus pay your late fee.
Okay, so, so I just want to think of this, if they're not paying is because they don't have the money. So if we're going to collect the money to put it into the, in just an account that it serves us no good, does nothing for us, I would rather, because I mean, it's going to be shut off, they're not going to have four months of, four billing cycles of non-payment, it's going to be shut off way before that. So I would have rather just stick with a higher late fee. You know, and instead of going, like deposit, it's a deposit, it's a one, it's a deposit. Then if you're not current, it's a late fee interest or whatever that is. I just think. Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear that I can only establish one set of penalty or late fees. I can't do, oh, because you didn't.
Yeah.
Turn, you know, you refunded your deposit and now you're late. I can't do a different type of late fee.
No, that's.
Yeah, okay. So now you want to talk about the, the, the amount of the late fee?
Well, hold on, is that all you needed for the deposits?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, wait, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
How do they pay the, the, the deposit?
Once they establish water service through an application.
Well, in other words, can you put it on a credit card?
Yes, you can pay your deposit by check, credit card, whatever means.
Okay, there's a number of restaurants in particular and others that if you put it on your credit card, they want 3% more.
Correct, we charge a processing fee that go, is $2.95 or.
Oh, you do.
To, yes.
Okay. Yeah, then, never mind, you answered my question, okay.
Now, is that all you needed for deposits?
Deposits, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Did, did you have on for your three items today, the fines and penalties and fees, or is that for another day?
That's separate, that's for another day.
So we'll just touch on that since you guys brought it up. The original 1.5%. When I sat down with staff and saw that, I was shocked. I think a Starbucks coffee costs more than that, especially for most of our standard bills. Single-family residents here, so what we were proposing was 5%.
5% or $10.
Or $10, which is ever greater. Understanding that was a large jump from what we had, but we are open if you guys think that that should be higher. You did a comparison of multiple agencies.
It varies between multiple agencies.
Check with Tony.
Yeah.
Tony, do we have, because I know on our HOAs, we are limited by statute. Are we limited?
I'm going to work.
So you want to touch on the other entities that you did a comparison to?
Yeah, I did. I did all the local utilities, they all range, some are more or less than that, so there's no consistency between the utilities. Some will charge, I think, one utility actually charges $10 a day, so.
What does Lee County do?
Lee County does the percentage, 5, 5% or $5.
5% or $5, whichever is higher.
They're a friendly utility, is what they, they pride themselves on. That's what they pride themselves on, as being a friendly utility. So, understanding the deterrent of a fine or penalty is to stop.
Penalty, not a fine.
Fine, penal, penalty, penalty, thank you.
Fee?
Okay.
Penalty is to deter the action from occurring, occurring again. Again, I, I try to compare these types of things in my own life, what, like at my Verizon bill, if I, you know, or if I, my FPL bill, I try to think of that in those circumstances and how, how are those treated? Do I get tagged $35, $2, $5 a percentage? So, as of right now, we're at 5% or $10 of a penalty, whichever is greater, if you.
For a recommendation.
For a recommendation, but if you don't see that that is.
Enough.
Enough, we can absolutely change that, or sleep on it and we'll bring it back to you with the language.
I, I think I'd like to have a recommendation from you guys, from staff, and Leslie, as to what you would recommend. I mean, you guys live in the real world just like we do, so what is, what would make some sense?
Okay, we, we can do that, if that's what you're thinking. I was, I was, I will be honest, that I was a little concerned that the jump to 5% would have been a shock.
I think the, in 2012, it appeared as if we attempted to change the late fee from 1.5 to 3% and that didn't get accepted, or that didn't go through.
So that was the hesitant song.
You're still dealing with pocket change.
I, that's what I'm thinking, I think they'll be just happy to get their deposit back.
Yeah, okay.
When we do that, we do both.
Yeah.
We did this hand, put it in the, I mean, just, but I think, I mean, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm comfortable with 25, I think pretty much everything is $25 or greater, I mean, 20, you know.
Little vinegar with sugar.
It's two, you know, you're looking at two months, so. Whatever staff comes up with it.
We can do that.
Yep.
I agree.
All right, your next item for.
The next item is cross-connection, and this is in hand with the cross-connection policy that we're required to have, where the backflows on any above ground, above-ground backflows on any water meters require annual inspections of the backflow from our multifamily and commercial accounts.
We lost Bob, we lost Bob online, just so you know.
Are these predominantly for condos?
Condos and commercial, anything, anything larger than a, a one-inch meter.
And right now, because I've got a ton of these in my community, I've not seen a warm body touch or even look at one of these in 30 years. So is somebody checking these, is it our job to tell the association that you've got a problem, you've got a leak, you've got a whatever? Or is it their job to monitor? Because if it's their job to monitor, your first thing is, you better have a class of explaining to them what it even is.
Yeah.
They don't know anything about what these things are out in front of their units.
I can't speak for within the HOAs, but I, we first started implementing requiring these inspection reports last year. Prior to that, we did not.
Are we getting them?
Yes.
So the HOAs are coming back and retaining, who are they retaining?
Different plumbers or different.
Is, is, is it a certification that we want?
Yeah, they have.
We don't want Billy Bob out there giving us a certification that he doesn't know what he's doing.
They have to be certified in backflow devices and they have to complete that online.
And so, and, and we're getting those back?
Yes.
Okay.
We first started with the two-inch meters, now we're working our way down, so, but we are getting those requests completed.
And this cross-connection control program.
It's a.
When you're saying cross-connection, what do you mean cross, to me, it's a different word.
Uh, it's what this Department of, Florida Department of, or Department of Environmental Protection refers to avoiding the cross-contamination of water into the main water supply. So the cross, they don't want water to flow back into the main system.
But you're not talking about an irrigation system connected to this, you're talking about the ability of an owner to be able to, let's say, make a concoction in their sink, create a vacuum and suck it back into the system.
Correct, so that's why after the meter, it's required to be installed on pop domestic, domestic and fire service line.
Backflow group.
Right.
Yes, so this program is being pushed on us.
That's why we have those double red pipes in all these units, ones for the fire, ones for the potable.
Right.
Okay.
And Bob is back online, he's been on for a couple of minutes.
So this, essentially, again, this hasn't been updated since 2003, this is, this came down upon us, so we need to make sure that we get it in our rules and get it updated.
So our HOAs, I'm just waiting on sticker shock, what you're saying is our HOAs and their property management companies already know about this right now?
The ones that I've encountered, yes, and they have been completing the inspection reports. A lot of them are accustomed to sending that to Lee County because they assume Philly County, but now they're getting to be.
It'll be interesting, well, I play golf with two presidents of neighborhood associations, I know what I'm going to see tomorrow.
Carol, you had a question?
Blank look.
Yeah. Um, where we lived back in Illinois, our house had a backflow valve that had to be inspected every year. And the village knew that because they had to register it when they installed it originally. So do we have something like that, where we know where, who has backflow valves and who doesn't? Do we know that?
Yes, but not entirely. I think we do still have some to go onsite and to do some verification.
Every, every year, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
So once a year, we would get a notice that we had to have our backflow valve inspected. And it was usually, we used the same guy every year, but it was like 100 bucks. And I think he maybe spent all of seven minutes there. Three, probably three of that being just finding it downstairs in the basement where they had installed it, but.
This was on a single-family home?
Yes.
Never heard of that.
And then, so then, uh, once it was inspected, he had to send in their inspection report to the village, which would be to GSCDD. And then, and you, you had a six-month period of time to get your backflow valve inspected every year. If you didn't, then it was a fine of, I think it was $200. So most people just in the six months, got their backflow valve inspected for the 100 bucks and that way didn't have to pay 300.
We did that, you take what, 1,000 connections or 500 connections and take it to 8,000? Single families, man, that would be a.
Well, that, that's the case because the, the backflow wasn't above-ground backflow, but with most of the residentials that are underground, per the permit criteria manual, they have dual-check valves.
Well, no, ours was down in the basement. In the, in the ceiling of the basement.
But ours, our residential have the dual-check valves which avoid that inspection process, so they don't have to comply with those. So it's for any five eighths, any size meter that has an above-ground backflow device.
So we're working on implementing this. Obviously, we have two office staff that are trying to tackle this on top of everything else, but we, we definitely have to get these in the rules and get it updated. And Leslie's been chipping away at it.
Yeah, and part of the process, when, when you see the rules come back, is whether or not the policy, the back, the cross-connection policy will be a separate schedule.
Yeah.
Then it can be more easily amended or incorporated right into the body of the rules themselves, but we'll discuss the best way to do that.
I think I just referenced, and yeah.
You referenced, right, as opposed to one of the other districts I represent, their cross-connection backflow policy is right in their rules, so.
Right.
It's, it's a more complicated process to modify. Do you have a schedule of all of our people who qualify for this or that have these? Do you have a schedule of all?
We are, it's a working process right now, like.
How many actually know what we're talking about?
Right now, I believe I have maybe less than 200. So I haven't had, and those are two-inch meters, one and a half, two-inch meters. So the only, I would say, Summer Winds is one of the communities that has not. one of the communities that has not responded, but they're on the next round. So they're just, they were just introduced to the process of that they have to comply with this.
They just have what, two, three-inch meters?
No, they have one and a half inch meters.
At each building?
Right.
So that's twenty-one buildings. Okay.
So, and Leslie, this is the, we're sending both Isaac and Austin to the certification class next week.
Correct.
Um, so staff will be trained and hopefully certified on this, this type of.
So this item goes through the fact that we want to definitely establish that if they don't comply, the water will be shut off. I know I, I noted seventy-five, but I'd probably increase that to a hundred and fifty. Because I am required to send final notice prior to disconnection by certified mail. This is time-consuming. I am the only person doing this process. We do have a third party that does the auto renewal notices, but the follow-up and the fees, that's maintained by me.
Some, some of these have four units on a building in a meter. Other ones have eight, other ones have twelve and some have sixteen. So it doesn't seem to me that one shoe fits all. It needs to be a sliding scale fee.
The turn-off fee?
Yes. Why would a guy that's got, one that's got sixteen units pay the same if one's got four?
Cause you turn off the water.
Yeah, the, the number of people that are suffering because of it widely varies.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do, it comes in in one meter.
So maybe you, you're suggesting the penalty be, be a per ends per.
Per unit served.
Okay, we can consider that.
It might come down to the deal that the penalty is pocket change. They won't, they'll just say, to heck with you.
Well, and again, it is compliance because we're being held to standards that we are passing off to the end user.
Okay.
Is that all you needed for that, that item?
Yeah, I mean, when we review that, Chelsea and Leslie, take into account that the statute is kind of broad, gives you a lot of leeway, but just talks about you have to take into account certain factors and then it gives you a broader question upon any other factor affecting the use of the facilities furnished. So you have a whole bunch of things, but it has to be equitable basis. So that's what, you know.
Yeah, when you start dealing with the public and especially this on pages thirty-six back to forty and this table sixty-two dash five-five-five, that's not English. That is not English. People will not understand this at all.
Yeah.
And, and I would give them a good amount of time to comply.
Yeah.
Four months, five months, six months, something like that.
Yeah, we started last year with two-inch meters and rarely am I getting the reports submitted by the expiration. So it, it takes some getting used to that we're now requiring.
Well, by the time you get the notice, you make the phone call, they put it in their schedule. Then they come out, then, then they usually have to, you know, re-supply it to whoever was requesting the notice and whatever. I mean, that's a good two, three months right there.
Right.
So I would give them plenty of time.
This is all assuming that it's not defective and they're gonna have to spend a lot of money to fix it. There's where your problems at.
Well, that's true too.
Okay. The last issue is related to landscaping and I know this is content to be a sensitive area.
So this originally came up as we're discussing and contemplating changing boxes. Right? And the, the vendor, whomever it may end up being, that'll be putting in the new boxes is obviously gonna have to take out and contend with a lot of existing landscaping. The intent of this rule or this language would be to alleviate landscaping issues in the future. Once we put a brand-new box in with brand-new pits and brand-new material. And I know staff has had, we've come across.
So we, yeah, we have several that we've come across. We don't have the time or the resources. We only really address those that are really bad.
Yeah. So ultimately, this is more forward-thinking with the meter box replacement and hopefully the meter system replacement. But this would help alleviate some of the issues that staff are having in the field with regards to obstruction of access to the boxes in the pits, especially if there's a leak or a break or damage or, and they have to do work.
So you're talking about like tree roots and stuff?
Or, or more, more, maybe. Planters. I saw a statue on one box.
Yeah.
Um, it's, yeah.
Was it a pretty statue? I mean, you know.
It could have been spray painted, but.
Well, if you put a statue on top of it, it, like a, a yard decor ornament, that's one thing, that could be picked up and moved. But when you start getting in huge landscaping and plants, especially people who put those damn bogan vibes. Those things, they are mean and they, you don't wanna mess with those.
Right.
Well, I, I know that Gateway loves its trees. So are we talking about cutting trees here? I mean, does this, does this discussion lead to a bit, a, a bigger discussion?
If the meter pit was there and the tree was a spindly little thing thirty years ago, that's one thing. The fact that it's growing into a two-foot, three-foot diameter tree, that's not the owner's fault. That's not the owner's fault. You're talking about landscaping and things done by the owner that fall within that three-foot sphere of that structure, meter pit, whatever.
Okay. So it would have to have been, not necessarily something nature did, but something that the homeowner did.
Or the homeowner allowed. Good examples, grass just growing right over the top of water meter pits or manholes or whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
So this area I've defined in the amendment that we're proposing is to allow staff to remove minor landscaping with or without notice. That would be a judgment call. We'll create a policy to.
Do, do we have a form? Why can't we create a form that just goes out to the owners, giving them a notice twenty days, thirty days, sixty days, whatever? That you've got a problem, fix it. And if you don't have it fixed within thirty days, we're good and we'll charge you a fee.
We normally do that, but the rules don't necessarily allow me to charge them.
So one of my other districts, yeah, one of my other districts created a rule as far as tree roots. As far as notice being provided, if tree roots are encroaching at the district right of way, causing damage, to send a notice to the property owner to address it. If the property owner doesn't do that, the district will, the district will, uh, there's a charge and fee. So we can work on that. That's a good idea.
Make sure we're clear. This is not inclusive of tree roots. That's can't be an owner's deal.
I was not thinking about.
I assume you, you did that purposely. It was tree roots.
That's what I was, so that's what I was thinking, you know, what.
It's the intent for, again, meter box replacement. Theoretically, it's going to be a clean pit. There should not be any roots. Now, if the land, if the property owner.
If the owner goes and plants a tree, that is a whole different ballgame.
Yes.
After we move it. But what we have right now is history. There's not much we can do about it. Otherwise, you're gonna be cutting down thousands of oak trees.
No, the, the intent is not to hold the property owner for aged oak trees that are intruding into a box.
We do have overgrown bushes that are, that were not
Planted by.
Planted by the meter box, but they grew and so now they're over.
It's a different deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Volunteer bushes.
Yes.
They voluntarily.
Mexican petunias. You plant one here today and tomorrow there'll be a million of them. They go, they go crazy. Okay.
So when we do put the new meters in and whatever, and we have to make it a clear area and there is a root there, what do, what are we going to do?
Well, that's what Bill said at the last meeting or the meeting before, there'll be a relocation, you know, of that box. Wanted to feed one way or another.
Tried to avoid.
Okay.
There's, the other way too is is some of these yards, and if you look at these roots on the oaks, they go to the drip line.
Yeah.
So that means you don't have, you're gonna, you're gonna find, you're not going to find a clear space. So when you get in there and you've got a space that is somewhat usable, you can have those roots and then take something like coal tar epoxy. You put that on that root, it isn't gonna grow anymore. Not gonna grow.
It, it's a case-by-case scenario.
Okay.
Honestly, I mean, in Gateway Greens, it's a whole different situation than we've got in Daniel's Preserve or Magolia. So and that's working with the, the installer for the boxes. Determining different types with the different criteria and costs associated to that. But the intent is to have a clean box, clean pit and hopefully a clear through, at least three-foot area so staff can access if need be. And keep in mind, with the equipment, like with our existing equipment, it's transmitting information. So if you plant, put something right over it, you know, you're could be obstructing that transmission. So again, this is forward-thinking.
Yep.
Trying to get ahead of it, one and done.
Right.
Those three hundred that we're doing, I'm gonna say from what I've seen on the map, a good half of those, we're gonna learn a lot of lessons.
Okay.
Because they are a challenge.
That was intentional.
It'll be a true test.
Those locations were intentionally chosen for that reason.
Touch your teeth on them.
Is that all, is that all you needed for now?
That's all I need.
She gave her forty-three minutes.
We didn't address one, but do you want us individually to go back to Amendment Eight? And send you our comments on some of those definitions and fees? Some of those fees are just insane. They make no sense whatsoever. I mean, how, how are you planning on handling those fees?
Fees, recall the scheduled rates fees and charges.
Yeah, the things like.
The definition of fees.
Like the availability fee, the friendship fee, all those weird things they had.
Right.
Some of them, like I said, they make no sense.
Yes.
How do you wanna handle that? Are you going to do them?
I'm planning to work with the rate consultant to clearly the finals.
Okay, I have a question, a completely different issue, but on water. A friend of ours who's on City of Fort Myers water, so it's not you guys, came over the summer. I got a water bill for over three thousand dollars. It seems that he had a little leak in a toilet and it just kept going. And.
Did he ever read his meter?
Huh?
Did he ever read his meter on a monthly basis?
Well, he wasn't here all summer.
Well, you still get your bill and you'd see that the usage is out of sight, I would think.
Well, three thousand dollars worth got his attention. But anyway, do we, so when he was negotiating with the city of Fort Myers as to this thing. Anyway, do we have, they, they have no way to tell anybody that they've got a leak anywhere.
Right.
I mean, it just keeps going.
We do.
Do we have anything?
Yeah, their names Leslie and Vicky and they are excellent customer service representatives that this district has.
As long as we gain the data.
Okay.
I got one last week, okay, for the HOA. It says, here you are, you're using too much water. Go check it because either you have a leak or you're using too much water. That is not allowed. Check it again. Last time, check it and then the thing. So I got that one.
Carol, we, we do, by the thirty.
I get it all the time.
So Carol, we have it by the hour. We can tell by the hour. And if you flush your toilet in the middle of the night and you're on district water, we can tell that you flushed your toilet in the middle of the night. We're not, but. So we have, and, and staff, Vicky and Leslie, I can't commend them enough because we get compliments every month on how they are preventative, they reach out in advance, you know, bringing things to their attention.
Thank you. We have, we have.
It does even have a process in place.
Yes, and even with that, we still have situations. I have one that I may even have to come to the board next meeting.
Your, your, your issue is, is that it's water that's like the one you gave. That's one where the water impacts the sewer. Because it went into the sewer system. There are some that you would have a leak that where you could, let's say, argue and negotiate not having to pay the sewer side of it, just the water side.
Correct.
Well, and there was, and there was also a frog living in the toilet too. On top of everything else.
I do wanna say with the monitoring, for us, we add trouble codes and high consumption after forty-eight, seventy-two hours.
Okay, good.
Thank you. One person reviewing that, it is up to you as the customer to either make sure that that's addressed.
For our HOA, it's, we got fifty-three, fifty-four, maybe fifty-five meters.
I don't know about that. I can get my twenty-four hours after I go to, I'm like, oh, there you go, seven-thirty. Oh, yeah.
For irrigation on our HOA, it's important that we get that notice because that water just keeps going and going and going. And on a two-month basis, until you get the next reading, it's sticker shock when you see that thing.
Yeah.
So.
I have overfilled my pool, overfilled my pool a few times, Carolyn. It's very expensive with the city.
It sure is.
There's no forgiveness.
No, there isn't.
No other questions? Thank you, Leslie. All right, so we're joined and we'll take a little recess for.